At this time, I would like everyone to stand. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ben Emden. Would you like to lead us in the pledge this evening, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everyone. On the way over here, I was thinking, well, this is my favorite day of the year, but it can't really be my favorite day. It's one of my favorite days because there are quite a few as we wrap up a school year. So I'm glad to have everybody here. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Beam to welcome everyone for the evening.
Thank you, Madam President. It's great to be here tonight and to provide the official welcome to the wonderful Forest Hills Fine Arts Center. I'd ask for our director, Mr. Jeremy Cox, to come forward and provide our welcome. Mr. Cox.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Fine Arts Center for our annual end-of-the-year board meeting, the fun one. I am Jeremy Cox. As Dan said, manager and tech director here at the Fine Arts Center. This year, we have gotten back to a new normal, a busier new normal. From July 21 to June 22, we have had 128 school events, choir, band, orchestra, musicals for all grade levels, 167 meetings for instruction, HR, GLI, and even AP student testing. We are a high-demand site for that multipurpose room down the hall. 333 community events and classes, including yoga, painting, and ballroom dancing and more. 21 rentals, including West Michigan Youth Ballet, U.S. District Court Naturalization Ceremonies, monthly, Kendall College of Art and Design Graduation, and MSU Coaches Clinic, and several others. All have increased more than in years past, and next year is shaping up to be jam-packed as well. Look for an announcement for us soon about our season shows returning for next year. I know I'm excited about that. I'm sure people are sick of hearing about COVID this and COVID that. Well, we are done with COVID testing here, finally. One good thing that did come out of this whole time for us here was live streaming. We have made it easy for family and friends from near and far to watch the student productions here. We have seen logins from Greece, China, Australia, Chile, India, and, of course, right here at home. We have loved hearing the kids back in the building, love seeing art hanging in the gallery, especially our 15-year retrospective exhibit, and love seeing the building so busy and thriving again. We are excited to continue to host events for community and look forward to introducing more public who have not been here before. Hand it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent Beam, are you ready?
I am.
We have a lot of presentations.
We do. It is a very special night where we are recognizing learning and growth and service in so many different ways. And we want to begin tonight appropriately with our students. And this year, the Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation started a new contest. And to help explain a little bit more about that, I would ask the foundational director, Mrs. Elizabeth Brink, to the podium to talk about tonight's first student recognition. Mrs. Brink.
Thank you, Dan. So, good evening. As Dan said, I'm Elizabeth Brink, and I'm the Executive Director of the Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation. The Foundation is a separate entity from our district as we are our own 501(c)(3) organization. The Foundation exists to raise funds to support excellence in education and education initiatives that typically aren't covered by school budgets or district budgets. We do so through various fundraisers throughout the year and then support our valuable teachers, schools, and principals, awarding grants in the fall and spring, supporting needs identified by our principals, and through awarding even high school scholarships to graduating seniors. This year, because of individuals and community partners, as a school foundation, we were able to award nearly $300,000 to our teachers and principals, who every day inspire, transform, grow, energize, and encourage young minds of our students. Now, our district recently held commencement exercises for the class of 2022. Now imagine this class of 2022 has been with us for 13 years. So this year's graduating class has been impacted by the generous gifts of our community through this foundation in funding totally nearing $3.9 million. And we have touched every single school, that's 17 of our schools, the Transition Center, Fine Arts Center, and Community Services Programming. How do we do that? Well, we support those grants, and those grants, everything from microscopes to video cameras, CNC machines, musical instruments, physical education equipment for every single child in our district, and so much more. So with our community and our district, the Foundation has an incredible impact on our schools. As Superintendent Beam alluded to, one reason why we are here tonight is to celebrate the talents and accomplishments of our students. Our Foundation exists because of our community having a vested interest in education. An important member of our Foundation is our youth and our students. This year, we wanted to hear from our students and give them a voice. So the Foundation created an art and essay contest for students to articulate and expand upon the question, what does community mean to me? We had three categories for our art and two categories for our essay contest. And the Foundation had an ad hoc committee to review all of these entries, and we will recognize these contest winners now. So students, when you hear your name called, please come forward and receive your recognition. The winner of our kindergarten through second-grade art contest is Emery Fleet. Emery? So we have pictures in the back, and we will show the picture here that Emery drew. So Emery is a second grader at Pine Ridge Elementary School. In Emery's artist statement, it reads, "Community means where everybody lives and grows and learns." Emery is the recipient of a $100 gift card, and she also received lots of other artist goodies a couple weeks ago, too. So continue to create and grow and draw for the future. Thank you, Emery. Our third and fourth grade winner in the art contest is Aileen Cummings. Aileen? So Aileen, excuse me, it's pronounced Island. So Aileen is a fourth grader at Ada Vista, soon-to-be-fifth grader, right, Aileen? In her artist statement, she writes, "People from different walks of life coming together to plant trees to make our home and earth a better place." Aileen also received a $100 gift card and additional artist goodies. Aileen, congratulations. Aileen? And on to our fifth and sixth grade art winner is a fifth grader from Northern Trails, Sophia Smolligan. Sophia? So Sophia is also a recipient of a $100 gift card and additional art supplies. And in Sophia's artist statement, she writes, "We are all one community. Respect and be kind to each other. We are stronger together." We couldn't agree more, Sophia. Congratulations. So congratulations to these three elementary students, and thank you to the families, parents, and teachers who inspire them every day. Moving on to our essay contest winners. So we had two categories, one for our seventh and eighth grade students and one for our ninth through 12th grade students. Students were given the opportunity, rather than to draw, to write, what does community mean to me? Would the two individuals, Emma Beckich and Zanea Vosberg, please join me here? So after reading 900 pages of essays, we are pleased to congratulate Emma, an eighth grade student at Northern Hills Middle School, for her essay titled, "The More the Merrier: Communities I Belong To." Emma, would you like to read your essay for us and share it with us?
Hello, everyone. I'm Emma Beckich. Being born in Canada as the only child of two immigrants from Serbia, I got to experience both Canadian and Serbian cultures. We celebrated two Christmases, spoke two languages, and cheered the loudest for both tennis and hockey. When I was seven, we moved to Michigan. This brought around unexpected challenges. Along with moving to a new house, going to a new school, and making new friends, there were many changes in everyday life. The milk turned out to be in a plastic jug instead of a bag. I had to wait an extra month for Thanksgiving, and temperatures were now measured in Fahrenheit. I wasn't even sure what to call my mother, Mom, Mum, or Mama. I felt as if I had to choose between being Canadian, American, or Serbian. My family is big and loud. My grandma gets offended if somebody doesn't want to eat when she offers food. We blast folk music, get lost at family reunions, and get into each other's business all the time. But above all, we love and support each other. I'm proud of my Serbian heritage. But donuts from Tim Hortons still taste the best, maple syrup is always on my table, and I say sorry more often than others. I still take my shoes off before getting inside and spell center as C-E-N-T-R-E. Free health care is fantastic, and I'm proud to be Canadian. Then again, the warmth is better than the cold. I love watching football. I'm 5'5" and not 165 centimeters tall. I just started drinking soda and not pop. My friends are Michiganders, and I use my hand to explain where I live to my Serbian and Canadian friends. I'm proud to call Michigan home. I was struggling with choosing if I was Canadian, Serbian, or American when I realized that I did not have to choose. I could be all three. Belonging to a community means having something in common with other community members, building relationships and caring about each other. We can belong to multiple communities at the same time. I have ties with all three communities through many experiences, memories, and friends. Whether I am in Serbia, Canada, or America, I feel at home, and these communities will continue to be a part of my life even if I move to a completely different place in the future. And yes, I am proud that I can call my mother all three, Mom, Mum, and Mama.
Wow. Thank you, Emma, so very much. And Emma is the recipient of a $200 or $250 scholarship, and her complete essay can also be found on our website and on the easel displayed here tonight. So our final essay winner is a recipient of a $1,000 scholarship, and she is a recent graduate in the class of 2022 from Forest Hills Eastern High School, Zanea Vosberg. Zanea's essay is titled, "When I Was Alone." Zanea, would you please share with your essay tonight?
I am Zanea Vosberg. I will be reading my essay. I used to climb the large pine tree in my backyard after it rained. I liked to think that the damp bark would negate the pale sap that oozed from the crackling skin of the ancient wood. Truthfully, however, there was a part of me that liked the way the sap would remain on my fingers for days, no matter how hard I tried to remove it. A part of me that came to life at the lonely freshness of dripping needles. A part of me that longed for the subtle tremors that circled my nerves as I climbed higher and higher into the soaked branches of my tree. I knew the real reason I would climb was to reach the empty bench that the limbs of the pine made at the top, the place where I could sit and watch the laughing children at the park across from my house. The needles created a window for me to look at the children laughing and running in the damp grass. Their shrieks of joy would echo up the alternating branches below me to the place where I perched. Their shrieks of joy would echo up the, I wished I was with them, rolling in the mud and grass. There is a part of every person that longs to be part of a community. When I was young, I tried desperately to ignore this fact. There is something both terrifying and painful about opening up, about being vulnerable. In every situation, I would give the right answers and responses. I was funny, I was kind, I was friends with every person I met. No, I was friendly with them, which in my mind was the same thing. I was never bullied, or at least, I never knew if I was. I walked through the first half of my life in a protective fog of ignorance. I kept people at bay, and isolated myself. They did not accept me. I was liked. I was lonely. I was forgettable. I now look back at those days of false independence and acknowledge the lies I had fed to myself. Community is not something that comes to you out of nowhere. It is not a miracle or lottery that is only handed out to the people with just the right amount of patience and luck. In order for a friendship to be truly cultivated, it must be worked for. I spent years of my life justifying my self-inflicted isolation by calling it independence. I tried to convince myself I did not need a community or support system, that I could fend for myself and did not need another person to look out for me or to be my friend. It was not until I found a real community of my own that I realized how necessary one is. Having a group of people that I knew I could turn to and count on changed my view of myself and of life. I realized that I am worthy of friendship and love. The independence does not mean trying to prove that I do not need anyone else. The truth of the matter is that everyone needs other people. I know that I did. Relationships take work and are not easy. You need to hold on tight when you find a community and not let go. In a way, keeping a strong community is like climbing a tree. You need to work and reach for every connection you want to make. Having a community allowed me to see and become a person I can be proud of. Thank you.
Wow. Our futures are incredibly bright with amazing artists and writers such as these individuals here tonight. And thank you, students, who shared your voice through art and written prose and participated in our first annual art and essay contest. As I said, their artwork and essays can be found on the Foundation website, www.fhpsf.org. And as a Foundation, we look forward to continuing to offer our students a voice in our district through the Second Annual Writing and Art Competition. So let's give all of these students, again, a welcome round of applause.
And with that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Beam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brink, and congratulations, students and families as well. We're so proud of you. Madam President, members of the Board and community, our next student recognition item comes to us all the way from further west in the Midwest, in Ames, Iowa. And we are so proud, once again, to have an outstanding team at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals for 2022. And here to explain a little bit more about this and the incredible feat that it is, is Mrs. Marty Atwater, who's been coordinating and volunteering for Odyssey of the Mind for as long as I can remember. So I'm going to turn the podium over to Mrs. Atwater, who will explain a little bit about our award-winning world championship team. Mrs. Atwater.
Thank you, Superintendent Beam. It is with great pleasure that I get to introduce to you tonight seven outstanding Odyssey of the Mind students and their volunteer coaches. I'm going to name them first. Lauren Brace, Tara Brace, Aiden Pomeroy, Maya Rogne, Toby Cameron, Alex Smith, and Haley Giller, who joins us from Northview High School. These are otherwise all Central High School students, and they are coached by Mike and Ren Brace. They've just returned, as Dan said, from Iowa State University and the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals, where they and eight other Forest Hills teams and their coaches represented Forest Hills with deep pride and excellence. This team is here tonight because their efforts succeeded even the highest standards required just to get to World Finals and compete at the world level. So if the team could join me up here, while they come up, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Odyssey of the Mind. OM is the world's oldest international creativity competition, and you guys deservedly clink as you come up. It is a problem-solving competition. Odyssey students develop incredible abilities in countless areas such as teamwork, collaboration, organizational and presentation skills, and so many other areas of divergent thinking and creativity. Students start in kindergarten, and there is no ceiling, so those lifelong learners out there who want to get involved, give me a call. Literally, once you're in kindergarten, there is no ceiling, so anybody who is a student can participate in World Finals, and all you have to do is, like, take a community college class, and yes, you too could have a board team. It'd be great. Many teams compete for years and never even make it to the state finals, let alone the world finals. There is tremendous experience standing to the right of me because most of the members here have not been to World Finals just this year, but they have prior experience as well. This year is special because this team brought home that incredible trophy you see, to finish third in the world in the problem that they choose to solve. There are five different problems. They chose the structure problem. For those who have a little change on them, what I want you to imagine, or if you have it, two nickels, two pennies. A structure built out of that, that is 15 grams, just that little bit of weight holds, for some teams, upwards of 1,000 pounds. That's pretty amazing. This team came close on the weight thing, but they did something that is absolutely unheard of. In the problem they chose to solve, there are four components. The weight that they held, which is an incredibly huge part of their score, long-term points, style points, as I said, the weight, and then a spontaneous problem that really shows their ability to think on their feet. They took first place in three out of those four categories at the World Finals level. That in and of itself is such an incredible accomplishment. Almost more significantly, that's kind of hard to beat, but they beat themselves in the fact that they won the most coveted, highest achievement in all of Odyssey. To give you an idea, I had a parent today email me and say, I had no idea how big a deal this was until they got there. Thousands upon thousands, tens of thousands, every year, students compete in this worldwide. And when I say World Finals, I truly mean World Finals. During COVID, we didn't have world teams, but this year, we had 55 international teams from three different countries join all of the American teams. We had about 10,000 people in Ames, Iowa, as participants, judges, officials. And that was a small year. So next year at Michigan State, hopefully, you'll be back and repeat again what you did this year. The Renata Refusco Award is something rarely given, totally at the discretion, there's no threshold, it has to be coming from the judges. This team did what only one of the Forest Hills team has ever done and earned that Renata Refusco Award for exceptional creativity. I wish we had time to show you their performance because you laugh, you cry, it's absolutely incredible. So congratulations, team. I hope we do see you back. I think that happened. You've earned everything that you worked for, and you earned everything. You earned it. You earned it. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to our amazing problem solvers and creative artists that you all are, and thank you to our volunteer coaches. And congratulations, students, for representing Forest Hills so very well on the world stage. We're so very proud of you. And now, we move on to recognizing people who have embodied the guiding principles of the school district. And here to say a little bit more about the Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award is the President of the Board of Education, Mrs. Suzanne Kelly.
Good evening. Mr. Emden, would you like to join me up here, please? All right. It's someone that might not need an introduction, but I think since we're all here, we should do a nice introduction. The Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award is presented each year to those in the community who have started a project for the long-term benefit and/or have consistently demonstrated the district's guiding principles of respect, caring, collaboration, diversity, learning, trust, open communication, and high expectation over many years of service to our students, our schools, and/or the community. The award is named for Ben Emden. He has served our district in a variety of roles for 40 years. I see head nodding and smiling out in the crowd, so aren't we glad we were all here tonight? He has served, Ben has served Forest Hills in the 1960s and 70s as a teacher, principal, and business manager. From the early 80s, we can edit this if you want, from the early 1980s until June of 2002, he served our district as a parent volunteer and school board member. During those years, Ben chaired or co-chaired every millage and bond election the district had. All those elections were successful, with $190 million of improvements to the district being approved through those bond issues. He has served as the president of the Board for five years. In 2002, the district introduced our highest award of recognition, the Guiding Principles in Action Award. Tonight, the district will bestow two of these awards. I would like to begin by asking Dr. Fawson to come up and present the first one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Callahan. Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor to award the 2022 Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award to a very special member of the Forest Hills Central High School Social Studies Team, Steve LeBenz. Would you please care to join me up here? Steve is a superhero and a cornerstone at Central High School. He's been with Forest Hills since 1998 and has grown to become an essential part of Central's history. Steve shares his passion for social studies in how he teaches his students. He's served as department chair and has taught AP US History for years, and often drives to each student's house to put signs in their yard when they excel on their exams. He's traveled to Colorado for AP training to teach AP Seminar, which is a newer class at FHC, and he's fought to maintain the program's success despite scheduling shifts that are outside of his control. For many years, Steve has emceed nearly every assembly and graduation. He's also been senior class advisor for many years and chaperones many of the school dances. Students are always stopping by to see him, even when he's no longer on their schedule. He truly puts students and our community first in the decisions and lesson plans he creates, and can always be seen in the hallway greeting students as they walk in. Steve LeBenz also demonstrates his passion for social studies and FHC students in his actions and his knowledge. The service of veterans and military personnel and the protection of our country is a deeply rooted passion of Steve's. He works to assure that FHC students learn about the importance of our veterans through a number of school initiatives. For many years, he's reached out to the Michigan Veterans Home at Grand Rapids and spearheaded opportunities for students to donate items, such as personal hygiene items they are in need of, and would arrange for students to clean up the planting beds at the home. He eventually decided to take this further, and along with fellow teacher Brad Anderson, created a Veterans Day Assembly, where FHC graduates and community members come to be honored in the building. He helped fund the Veterans Wall at Forest Hills Central that now proudly showcases those who have served our country. Steve shows his passion for students in everything he does. His empathy, kindness, generosity, and intelligence inspire us all. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
It's good to have my name on it. Well, thank you. Thank you to the board and to the district, and for Ben being here. My gosh, that's the way we should all live our lives, to have an award named after us. I'm so glad to be able to see him here. I was hired in 1998. As you heard, we had 75 new staff members that year, 25 alone in our building. And so this, before I go on, I just want to say thank you to my wife, who is here, for her support and understanding all these years, the people within our building, the staff members who are so great. Steve Passino is here, my principal somewhere, John Gregory, one of my old principals, now over at Northern, John DiStefano, and Whitley Morse. Lisa Penega is a tremendous English teacher in our building, who should be getting some kind of award in the future, and she nominated me for this, and so I'm very thankful for that. And of course, the students, and that's why we do this. This project started several years ago with Brad and I. Brad had been a former student of mine and now a colleague. Brad was a state champion wrestler, and so we were thinking of ideas that, you know, the school had been around for a long time, before it was Central High, it was Forest Hills High School, and so we wanted to have some of that history up on our walls. And we initially thought about doing sporting events, sports teams, and people and whatnot. And then we started thinking that our head principal, or our head custodian at that time, Homer Spidel, had been a student at Forest Hills, and after he graduated, went straight to Vietnam. And so that changed our perspective on this. And so we started to look for veterans. And if you haven't seen the installation, we're really proud of it. We took a long time in coming up with the design. We work with Fast Science here in town. Each branch has a shadow box. Each veteran that we know of has their name and the year they graduated, and those are all set up down the hall. We just had a brand-new installation added today, because we had so many Army veterans, we needed to have a new box. The people at Freshwater Digital have donated a touchscreen, which is beautiful, so veterans can send us their pictures, anything they want, and people can look at it anytime they can bring it up on the screen. So we're really proud of it, really happy about it, and as we've started to say, as much as it means to us as teachers and people within the building, it means even more to our veterans. So we're really happy that we can be a part of it, and thank you so much for this. I appreciate it.
You've heard many of us say that this is one of our favorite times of the year. A few weeks ago, we got to celebrate graduates, and that is a highlight as a board member. It's crazy times, and watching every one of 186 to 303 kids walk across that stage in caps and gowns, all with smiles on their faces, knowing they're going to go out and make the world a better place, there is no better feeling in the world, except maybe getting to celebrate Steve, and who I'm honored to call up in a minute, all of you and people all over this district that make it possible. It is literally one of those things that make you a little shaky voice, teary-eyed. It's an amazing place, and we would not, there's no words to describe how fortunate we are to have all of you making that possible. So I have the extreme, oh, yes! So I am truly honored to get to bestow this honor on John Swart. John, would you please join me at the podium? Pictures work the thousand words, right? Lots of years, lots of history, lots of love, lots of loyalty and dedication we get to honor. It just gives one chills. So let me give you the details. John was hired by Forest Hills on March 1st, going to let you think for a minute, 1975. Mm-hmm, quite a testament. He's been with our district for over 47 years. And yes, that might sound like a long time, but wait to hear the kind of legacy that John brings with us as he stands here tonight. It runs in his family, being a part of Forest Hills. His mother was a bus driver, his dad was a bus driver, and a custodian, head custodian at Northern High School, and that is where John graduated from. Dare we share when? We'll let that go. You can tell how important service is to John by sitting down with anyone in operations, as you can see, for just a few minutes and asking about him. As maintenance supervisor, he's in charge of keeping the district's electrical and mechanical systems operating smoothly. And mechanical is near and dear to my heart, so that's another fun way to be able to share good memories with John. But if you ask his coworkers, he's a lot more than a boss to them. His passions are for NASCAR and camping, and he enjoys spending time on Mackinac Island, but he's always looking to provide those around him with a good laugh. John's sense of humor is something that everyone talks about, but do not touch the thermostat. It won't be funny. And that is a legacy that has lived on through many of his successors over the years, so that is a fun thing for many of us to laugh at. We've heard it many times. Enough for me. Let's hear directly from those who are closest with John. We have a short video prepared as a sort of introduction to John for those of you that haven't had the pleasure of working with him, and also a thank you for 47 years of partnership, dedication, humor, and friendship as one of the Papa Bears in the Forest Hills family. Thank you, John.
John is friendly, he's outgoing, he's very funny, and I didn't know that he collected little model cars.
He's a gift to the district. He's been a gift to me personally.
His big stature kind of intimidated me.
He's just the kind of Forest Hills that I just love, that has a servant attitude and is just a team player.
Turns out, he's a big teddy bear.
He's always open to help and offer a hand.
He was always very helpful, an easy guy to get along with, an easy guy to come to and ask questions.
I would never have gone as far as I did or stayed here as long as I did without his help. He taught me a lot, and he's a very dear friend.
Congratulations for all your years of service here with Forest Hills. I love working with you. You're always so pleasant and kind, and I love all your goofy jokes that you have to make me giggle on a daily basis.
John, you've given an awful lot to this school district, and we're really proud to say that we've been on your team, and really happy that you've been there for us.
You are the type of person that is always kind to other people, you always think of others, you are consistently there, and your heart is big, and we are so grateful to have you.
John, you're the best. I don't know, like, how you do it. It's been forever, and this district would not be the same without you.
Congratulations, John, to all the wonderful years of service for our students and staff and Forest Hills. You're such a treasure, and you're not allowed to retire.
So my privilege to present this award to John Swart. Mr. Emdin, would you like to share a couple words with us, please?
Thank you.
Holy cow, I hired John. He was a student. I remember him. And I remember his dad, wonderful guy. Well, it's so great to be back here at Forest Hills and see everyone, and to celebrate the award winners tonight, and to thank the award winners for their tremendous contributions to both our students and our community. This is what makes Forest Hills special, the fact that we have people like Steve and John make these contributions over many, many years. It's what makes us special, and I can't thank both Steve and John enough for everything they have done to contribute to both our community and our students. So it's great for me to be here, and I really appreciate having my name associated with people like Steve and John. Before I sit down, I think it's appropriate tonight to not just honor Steve and John, but also say a word about all of our staff members at Forest Hills. You know, the last few years have been tough for schools, and I would just like to personally thank every staff member at Forest Hills. I don't care what the job is, I'm not going to name all the job categories, because I'll be sure to forget somebody, but all of your contributions to our students are so important to get us through the last few years that have really been tough. So at least from my heart, thank you so much for all of our staff, what you have done for our students the last few years. You've gotten us through a very tough time, and I know our community really appreciates everything you have done. And I would be remiss tonight without one more thank you. You know, it's been a tough few years, not just for schools, but it's also been tough to be a school board member the last few years, and I would really like to thank our school board for their contribution. I think what the school board just heard is what I'm trying to communicate. Your contribution, the time you have given our students, it's really important. The work you do and the job you have done is really important. So thank you so much for your commitment to our students, our community, and the good work you have done. And with that, I'll sit down and see you next year.
Thank you, Ben. It's great to have you here, and it's great to have you represent the heart of our community. And thank you to Steve and John, and again, all of our student award winners tonight as well. There's another award this evening that we have the honor to present, and it's called the Judy Booley Perseverance Award. Judy, I believe, is here tonight, and Judy, if you would, please come forward with me. It's great to have you to help join me to honor our next recipient. The Judy Booley Perseverance Award was created in 2016 by the staff at Central Woodlands 5-6 School to honor their school counselor, Judy Booley. The award is presented annually to a Forest Hills public school employee who, in the performance of their job, demonstrates positive personal and professional attributes, which have been shown by Judy, such as resiliency and perseverance. During the 2015-16 school year, Judy faced personal and professional challenges on her road to physical and emotional recovery following a near fatal automobile accident. Yet through it all, Judy's strength, determination, and passion for her job and her students helped her rise above obstacles. Tonight, we'd like to honor the 2022 recipient of the Judy Booley Perseverance Award, Mrs. Cindy Reynolds. Cindy, could you please join me? Since 2008, when Cindy was first hired at Forest Hills, she brought joy to everyone around her. Teachers and staff at Knapp Forest, where Cindy serves as a counselor, were thrilled to share their thoughts and experiences about Cindy when asked for their impressions of her. They had so many incredible things to say, but they weren't alone in expressing their joy. To this day, students applaud and cheer Cindy every time she enters any classroom at the school. The whole thing started as a joke a few years ago, but students have kept the tradition alive. I love that tradition. Whether it's teaching a lesson about proper social media use, or doing a lunch group for students struggling with friendships, if she knows a student or a teacher is struggling, she's there. Knapp Forest runs on the FISH philosophy from the Pike Place Fish Market in Seattle, Washington, which is a way of approaching situations with a positive attitude, focuses on making people's day of those around you. And she started working with students to present staff with FISH awards, which makes the day for building staff, excuse me, which makes the day for building staff receiving the award, as well as the students who love bringing a smile to everyone's faces. It's a little thing that has gone a very long way. In fact, just a few weeks ago, Knapp Forest hosted Art Night, a fun event meant to celebrate various artwork pieces that have been, students have been working on. Just a couple of nights before the show, staff received news that the group that was going to set up for the event had to cancel their services. At a moment's notice, Cindy rallied to get things done. She sprung into action and to help the art teacher and organize staff and students to get artwork hung around the building and everything prepared. Thanks in large part to Cindy's help and quick action, Art Night went off without a hitch. Cindy wears many hats at Knapp Forest. She is officially a school counselor, but to students, she's also a caregiver, a mediator, and even helps with discipline whenever it's needed from time to time. She has impacted so many kids' lives by just being there for them. Teachers say they are astounded to see the change that occurs in students who Cindy is working with. She has created a warm and loving culture, along with all the staff at Knapp Forest. When it comes down to it, I could talk about Cindy for hours. She's an advocate for students, a friend to all of those around her, a good listener for staff and her peers, a positive role model, and hands-on, a humble servant leader. But one of the things that amazes me most about Cindy is her perseverance in service of our students, even during the most trying times. During the height of the pandemic, Cindy was diagnosed with two different types of aggressive cancer. Throughout her struggles, treatments, and stresses, Cindy pushed through and made every effort to stay connected with her students as she continued to make positive impacts on her kids, even when her body and mind battled a horrible disease. I truly could not be more proud of her, all that she has done for students and staff and parents and families like my own. So please join me in recognizing Cindy Reynolds for being a champion for all, for students and staff and families, and personifying the characteristics of the Judy Booley Perseverance Award. Cindy, please come forward.
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm usually a pretty good talker, so I'll just say a couple quick things. And one is that this lady right here is a rock star. She has been a role model for me and my counseling colleagues for years, and we learned from Judy. And what Judy went through inspired me when I faced some hardships as well, and I just want to thank you, Judy. Yeah, so I found out that this last year or two was the year to practice what I preach to the children, which is choose your attitude and control what you can, and, you know, most bad times pass, as my mom has always told me. So anyway, it was a time to kind of apply what I teach the kids, which is one of the reasons I love my job so much, because I have to try to practice what I preach. I don't always get it right, but I have to try. And so, anyway, my honor, thank you. It's been a couple years, hasn't it? It's been a road for all of us, but on to better times ahead, and good health. I think I'm all good, so, everybody, thank you.
All right, well, at this time, we have, the awards just keep on coming. So at this time, I think Superintendent Beam is going to say a few words about our retirees.
Yes, tonight, we are honoring 773 years of service among staff members who are retiring here at the end of the school year. And this is such a special thing, and I think what you hopefully can see, and you can see even our students, who we honored here at the beginning of the meeting, these staff members pour their heart and soul into the children who our wonderful community entrusts to the care of our over 1,000 staff members throughout the district. And these individuals have given their all throughout these 773 years of service, but especially in the last couple of years, I have seen a level of dedication and selflessness for the future of children that I've never seen before in my career. So this year, it is incredibly rewarding to honor these individuals tonight. Not all of the individuals are with us tonight. Some are already out enjoying the next chapter of their lives, and why not? They've earned it, absolutely. I'm going to start from the shortest number of years of service and go all the way up to the longest number of years of service. And I would just point out, these years of service are years just here in the Forest Hills Public Schools. One of the things we're so fortunate and grateful for are people who come to us from other school districts. And we don't have all those years of service here tonight, but they're happy to tell you about that, and it makes us so grateful that they stay with us here in Forest Hills and then retire at this point in time. The first few individuals, I do not know if they are here tonight, but if they are, please come forward. Michelle Funk has worked at Northern High School, helping in our amazing fine arts department in so many different ways with five years of service. Michelle, congratulations. I don't think she's with us here tonight, but we will get this to her. Linda Zimmerman has been a paraprofessional, helping at Northern Trails with our wonderful team of teachers with five and a half years of service. And I know Rita Wright is not here tonight. She is a registrar, and this is a really busy time of year for our registrars, but she will be retiring at the end of the school year as a registrar from Eastern High School with eight years of service. And then also retiring with 10 and a half years of service from Thorn Apple Elementary School, helping to keep our schools clean and shining, David Miller with 10 and a half years of service. And then also our registrar at Pine Ridge Elementary School with 11 years of service to the district, Trish Bond. Trish is retiring, and she's not with us here tonight. Tom Briggs, retiring from our Department of Transportation as a bus driver with 11 years of service. Thanks for teaching our kids while driving down the road as well, Tom. And I do know this next person is with us here tonight, with 12 years of service, retiring from the business office in the technology department as an executive assistant, always smiling, Annette Savage. Also with 12 years of amazing service to the Forest Hills Public Schools, and again, many more in the field of K-12 education, as the, retiring as the principal of Meadowbrook Elementary, Mr. Tim Shaw. And retiring with 15 years of service to Forest Hills, but again, more throughout her time in K-12 education, retiring as the maestro of the orchestras at Eastern Middle And I know she couldn't be with us here tonight, but retiring as a paraprofessional with 16 years of service to Orchard View Elementary School, please help me congratulate Carol Aaron. And also with 16 years of service to the district, retiring as a teacher of students with special needs from Eastern High School, help me congratulate Lisa Bagarres.[941.73][941.73][applause] Also with 16 years of service, retiring as our head secretary, as we say, these are the folks that really make the building run, from Central Middle School, Barb Weston.[960.44][960.44][applause] And I know she could not be here tonight, she's with her daughter who flew in from out of town, but retiring as the head secretary with 17 years of service from Eastern High School, Mary Beam.[979.51][979.51][applause] This next individual is with us with 17 years, retiring out of Northern High School as a paraprofessional, helping teachers and students, help me congratulate Joel Waterworth. And with 21 years of service, retiring out of Central Woodlands 5-6 School as a sixth grade teacher, help me congratulate Deb Elsholz. And with 22 and a half years of service, he might be out seeing the world, or he might be here, might have snuck in, please help me congratulate Carrie Flotter out of Central Middle School with 22 and a half years of service.[1054.58][1054.58][applause] I know this next person is here. You can't miss this person wherever you see her, with 23 years of service. As a paraprofessional and just an all-around magician with students, please help me congratulate With 24 years of service, with the amazing service out of our transportation department, driving a school bus for 24 years, help me congratulate Jill Breg. All right, we are moving on to the quarter-century mark. With 25 years of service, retiring out of Pine Ridge, helping to nourish students in our food service program, please help me congratulate Kathleen Clark. And with 24 years of service, retiring out of NAP Forest Elementary, a teacher of first grade, please help me congratulate Teresa Clark. And with 25 years of service, retiring from that same department that we honored John Swart earlier, a person that keeps so many things running as our head secretary there, Laura Bodine. Also with a quarter-century of service to Forest Hills Public Schools and truly thousands of students and families and staff throughout the district, another incredible counselor, retiring from Northern Hills Middle School with 25 years of service, help me congratulate With 26 years of service to the district, retiring as a sixth grade teacher from Eastern Middle School, help me congratulate Bill Miller.[1293.75][1293.75][applause] And with 27 years of service, retiring from Northern High School, a paraprofessional, helping students and staff, Janice Clark.[1313.42][1313.42][applause] And also with 27 years of service, retiring as an elementary teacher from NAP Forest Elementary, help me congratulate and thank Renell Connor. Also with 27 years of service, retiring from Eastern Middle School, teaching social studies, Elizabeth Stefanowski. And also retiring with 27 years of service as a teacher at Thorn Apple Elementary School, teacher of third grade students, Steve Williams. Retiring with 28 years of service, technically as a teacher of physical education, but helper in so many other ways, from NAP Forest Elementary, Mike Glass. Also with 28 years of service to Forest Hills, retiring as a fourth grade teacher, impacting again, hundreds and hundreds of lives, Pine Ridge Elementary School, Nancy Townsend. With 29 years of service, helping to teach communications and also exploring the outdoor classroom, retiring from Central Middle School, help me congratulate Leah Savigny. Retiring also with 29 years of service, out of our student services program, helping many buildings, but most recently Northern Trails and Northern Hills Middle School, as a social worker, help me congratulate and thank Kate Willoughby. With 31 years of service to Forest Hills Public Schools, retiring as a fifth grade teacher from NAP Forest Elementary, help me congratulate Amy Krueger.[1560.01][1560.01][applause] And with 31 years of service, retiring from our technology department, an engineer and making so many things work, from thousands of telephones to other things I couldn't pronounce, help me thank and congratulate Craig McCallum. And he retired at the semester. I'm not sure if he's here tonight, maybe he's out enjoying and exploring the world, well deserved, with 31 and a half years of service, retiring out of Collins and Ada Elementary Schools, teaching physical education, Tim Mazinski. And also retiring earlier this year with 33 years of service as a school psychologist, help me thank and congratulate Deb Woodburn. And finally, with 37 years of service, retiring as a teacher, teaching English language arts, and the impact on kids is incredible. You saw that from one of our student essayists here tonight, teaching English language arts from Eastern High School, Lynn Svengroes. So again, tonight we honor 773 years of service to thousands and thousands of kids and families in our community. The impact that you all have made is truly incalculable, but it will forever live on in the students that you served, in the lives that you've impacted, and in the better world that you have helped to create through the selfless dedication to the future of all of our youth. So on behalf of the community, on behalf of the members of the Board of Education, we congratulate all of you and can never thank you enough. I will also say that these schools, these buildings, stand as a testament to your selfless sacrifices over these many, many years, and they stand testament to sweat and toil and tears, and they belong to you as well. So come back from all of your travels and all of your adventures and share with us the things that you are seeing and help us see what's in that next chapter that you all have so richly deserved. So congratulations, all of our retirees. We have one final award we want to present tonight. who stepped down earlier this year, but we want to congratulate her for her 12 years of service on the Board of Education. If Marty Atwater would please join me here at the podium. You have always been a consummate volunteer. We see the impact that you have with Odyssey of the Mind and have been doing that for countless number of years, and your service to this community and to our school district in so many different ways, in such a selfless manner, has had a tremendous impact. So thank you to your 12 years of service on the Board of Education. We are so grateful for you, and please continue to do your magic with our students in all the things that you make possible for them. This microphone is yours if you'd like to say anything. Please.
Thank you. It has been my privilege to be part of a group like this, like Ben, all of my predecessors. I have learned so much from all of you, and I find, I'm kind of speechless, it's been a deep honor and I appreciate it. I stepped down, not to step away from Forest Hills. I continue to serve Forest Hills in any way that I can and with pride in our students, robotics, OM. I've enjoyed working the foundation and with this board and hope that I have more to give to the community. Thank you for letting me serve.
Madam President, that concludes our honorees for this part of the agenda, and I will just turn it back over to you at this point in time.
Okay. I think that I have one thing to do now, and we are going to move into a brief recess so people can say their congratulations, and then we are going to reconvene in the other room for the regular business part of the meeting. So at this time, we are in recess. All right, we are back from our recess, and that was recess, that was fun. So no, that was good. All right, Superintendent Bean, we are going to get into some business. We have lots of business and we have an instructional highlight, so why don't you kick us off?
We do. Thank you, Madam President. Our instructional highlight tonight really has an impact over many different buildings, and so since we're here at a district level facility tonight at the Fine Arts Center, we thought it was appropriate to highlight our Game Changers program. And really, the inspiration, everything behind Game Changers is a very special person to our school district and to our community, and here to say a few more and present is the very own Karen Sadler. Karen, please come forward.
Thanks, Dan. It's kind of like being in family here, just a real big one. So thank you for having me, thanks for inviting us tonight. I do represent Michael Sadler Foundation. We have a mission that is very similar actually to the school board's mission and our community foundation, and that is to inspire and empower students to realize individual potential with strong character. And we created this foundation when we lost Mike Sadler in 2016, and we created it because we knew there was something there that we needed to give back. Specifically, he had a legacy, and you may have seen these billboards around the Midwest. People from across the nation rallied to celebrate his legacy, and so we took that response and we thought, there's something here that we need to use to give back. And so we looked at these billboards and everything that was being printed and everything that was being said in media across the country, and we realized that that was all happening because Mike had created a legacy, and that wasn't by accident, that was mindful creation, that was him really working to create the best person that he could be. And so with that in mind, we created a program called Game Changers, and it is about building legacies. That's what the program does. It helps kids learn to build legacies. We realized that most people think that a legacy is something that exists only when a person dies, but in reality, that's not the case. Each one of us sitting in this room tonight has a legacy right now. It's what you think of her, it's what you think of him, it's whatever your reputation is, that's your legacy today. And that was built by being the kind of person that you've been, right? It's built by what you say and what you do. That is how you create a legacy. And so we thought, wouldn't it be great if we could create a program that could go into our schools and help kids at an early age understand what a legacy is, why it's important, and how to start building theirs today? And that's what Game Changers does. We teach kids how to start building their legacies mindfully, with everything they say and everything they do every day. So we put together a team of teachers with more than 175 years of combined teaching experience, and you can look at that board and you probably know most of them. These are people that were committed to putting together a quality program that would work in the schools, that would work for kids, that would work for our families, and they really did. So we have, they have created, we together created curriculum that could be delivered to second, fourth, sixth, and eighth graders to help those students learn how to start building their legacies the right way. The curriculum, the lesson plans, all meet core curriculum standards as well as social emotional development benchmarks. It's really cool, it's very powerful. Each lesson is centered around one or more of these pillars, and these are the pillars that really defined Mike's legacy. So we thought, let's take, let's use him as a model, we know that worked, and let's start with that. We will all develop our own customized, unique legacies, but this is a platform, it's a model for us to go out with and start teaching our kids, right? So education, setting goals, living with integrity all the time, that means doing the right thing even when nobody's looking. And that really starts to resonate with kids when they understand if they make a bad choice, because they think nobody's looking, it doesn't set so well. Compassion, showing kindness to each person, choosing friends carefully, and in that lesson we talk about how to get out of a friend group if all of a sudden those friends are starting to not act the way that you want to be, right, associated with in terms of behavior. That's a really cool lesson. And we talk about the importance of humor, you know, being able to find a reason to laugh every day and being able to make other people laugh, right, to lighten the mood a little bit. That's especially what we need today. So this program is really interactive. It's delivered to second, fourth, sixth, and eighth graders by 11th and 12th graders. So the 11th and 12th graders have to apply to be an ambassador of the program. They apply at the end of their sophomore year. It's a two-year commitment, and I'll tell you what, these kids that apply to do this are really the cream of the crop. They are hard workers, they understand the commitment. A lot of people don't get in because of grade point averages or whatever, because, you know, we want to be fair, we can't take kids out of the classroom if their GPA is struggling, right? So we are very sensitive to the people that we bring into this program. As far as the 11th and 12th graders, the real benefit that we should all appreciate is that in this program, you'll see on the outer side of that circle, they gain significant, deeper learning competencies that are so critical today, particularly as they launch and they go on to college, a vocational school, a job, whatever they do. Through this program, these ambassadors learn time management, they learn cooperation, they learn to work together in teams, they learn to, they learn to understand small children, maybe not so small children, they have compassion. Everything that you see there is present in every one of our ambassadors, and I'm going to deviate for just a second because we have two of those ambassadors here today. One is Amelia Shaw. Can you stand up, Amelia? And Grant Dean. Grant Dean, stand up. And they will be available afterwards for a few quick questions if anyone has them. It is finals week, so I just have to talk quickly and get them out of here. But anyway, that's really how the program works. The younger kids, they learn everything that you see in those outer circles, they learn all of the six pillars, they learn to work together in groups because everything in small groups is really dependent on them participating. It's a very interactive program. It does circle, like you see those arrows. So we have in-class workshops, younger kids are able to email with their ambassador if there's something they're worried about or something they want to talk about, they can email in between when we are in with them. It works. So the benefit of this program and what really differentiates it from others is that it's a mentoring program with a really good ratio. So on average, we have a ratio of one ambassador to six students, which is pretty good, and we're really proud about that. These are some of our Game Changers in action. So in second grade, we are at Meadowbrook, we're at Collins. We are also at Ada Vista in second grade. We are also in, in fourth grade, we're at Ada Vista, we're at Collins and Meadowbrook, and of course Northern Trails, and so you'll see some of those pictures of the kids up there. You can see, they're just, you can see the, you know, they're happy, they're having fun with their ambassadors, they create a relationship, and by the time we get to the sixth lesson, there is a relationship there. And we've had some real success stories in terms of, you know, helping kids along when they were really struggling, and I'll tell you what, they were really struggling after COVID. You know, they had been isolated in large part, sometimes they didn't have anyone to talk to, and so when they came back and we separated into small groups, they were anxious to share, they were anxious to talk, and what emerged from those small group discussions was really eye-opening, and it really, it brought home, you know, what we needed to do. There was a lot of depression, there was a lot of anxiety, there was a lot of bad things that happened in some homes, and some kids felt really isolated, some kids wondered why they were even around. And so we take that information, our ambassadors are trained to, when they hear or see or feel red flags, they know what to do. Becky Telzaro was instrumental in helping us along with that part of the program, but there are safety measures in place so that when there is a need for help, our kids know what to do, where to go, who to report that to. So we are especially happy to take it to Ada Vista and offer this in Spanish. So Erin Laurel, who is a teacher at Northern High School, set out with her AP students to translate the materials, and she offered an independent study to them so that they could actually get credit, because it's a lot of work, you know, and it had to be perfect, it had to be perfect, because we go down to Ada Vista and those teachers, they know Spanish. And so our kids, they worked really hard to translate it, they got credit for that, and it was a really good circle process. But our kids go down there, they speak only in Spanish, and most of them went to Ada Vista to begin with, so it's coming, you know, it's coming full circle for them, the teachers know them, and they know the building, they know the teachers, it's really a cool process. And we invite you to come down anytime, you know, to any of the schools and watch this happening. We started this program in spring of 2019, we took the year before that to get it ready and get everything in place and make it right, and that year, we had, we started with 23 The next year that we went out to recruit ambassadors, we ended up with 70, and that was after weeding out kids that might not be successful in the program, or, you know, we didn't, we wanted to make sure it was going to work for them and work for us. So that was a big growth spurt, and this year we have, last year I should say, we had 89 kids apply. This year, I've got a stack that's about that deep, my office desk, and we're going to start that process again, but, you know, it's a program that's growing in terms of who wants to deliver it because it's fun, it works, they grow. Ambassadors that come back the next year, they'll talk about how they were so much better in their engineering presentations, or they were so much better in their group work, and they took that leadership role on because of Game Changers. That's what a lot of our high school kids actually write their college essays about. So it makes an impact on them, it really, and it helps them grow and become their best selves. So since we've done this program from spring 2019 to spring 2022, we've had a total of 187 ambassadors. They have touched the lives of 4,025 students in two to eight, and that's skipping odd grades, so two, four, six, and eight, so for a total impact of 4,212 students. So we're really proud, I'm so thrilled with my ambassadors that have done all this work because they are really making a difference. But those numbers don't really mean anything to you, I mean, they're numbers, but more importantly, it's going to help you if you just see and hear people telling you really what the benefit has been to them.
I made this picture because we had Game Changers that day. I'm Mike, always do the six pillars.
Being a game changer is just empowering other people. Somebody who lives with the purpose of making a positive impact and helping others build legacies really just puts their full effort into being a good person and being kind to other people.
Humorous, compassionate, integrity, goals, education, and friendship.
It felt very kind of full circle to return back to the elementary school and see the kids start on their journey.
I see these kids that I had, and then they come back, and they are a part of Game Changers, and they are becoming ambassadors.
For me, I know when I was a little kid looking up to a high school, I was like, they are a superhero.
You will walk into the classroom and you have these kids all just looking up at you with just their bright eyes, and you have to look behind you and check to make sure you're not wearing a cape.
And to have that superhero be able to talk to you and say, this is right, and this is how amazing you're going to be, I've never seen anything like it.
Our kids love them. Of course, you know, for Game Changers, we really want, we want to celebrate and grow kind, passionate, loving humans, that's what the world needs right now. And our high school students have been
Of course, you know, for, for game changers, we really want, we want to celebrate and grow kind, passionate, loving humans. That's what the world needs right now. And our high school students have been trained, and they, and they have a great curriculum. And, you know, they come in and they mentor our students, and they're on point and on message.
I love it so much because I have a great ambassador and they teach us how to do really awesome things.
We're here to make them better people, right? And, and that having this program helps them to do that.
In game changers, I've learned to have integrity, to do the right thing when nobody is watching.
I think this is the program of, of the future. It's definitely training the younger kids, the younger generation, and bringing them up and helping them become amazing people.
Game changers really works with the youth, and it's making a genuine impact, not only on the younger students, but on the high school ambassadors as well.
Every individual deserves to feel like their legacy matters and that their legacy is something very important. Game changers was the first time I kind of really started to feel like a legacy is something that I want to create for myself, these kids want to for themselves.
Being a part of this program has really changed my outlook on what leadership is and what it entails. And I believe that through game changers, we have just helped a ton of children be able to reach their fullest potential.
I think all of it. I think every piece of Michael's legacy is totally there within the program. We get to talk to all different kinds of kids who come from all different kinds of places.
That is just shaping the world 20, 30, 50 years from now in a way that nothing else that I've been a part of or I've seen has the ability to come even close to.
Who do you want as a neighbor? And I would argue you want a great neighbor that will be caring and loving and compassionate. And those are some of the tenets that, that program is about and who we are as educators as well.
We hear from teachers, we hear from principals that the behavior of their students has changed as a result of this. They hear kids being kinder to each other and talking about legacies. And we have game changer stickers that teachers can give when they see something really great being done, but it is changing behavior. Parents notice a difference in their kids at home. And we hear that, we don't solicit that, we hear that. We have some teachers that may, may be in here that have had game changers in their classrooms. I would love for you to hear their feedback. They fill out a form every time that we're in their classroom with specific feedback, what worked well, what didn't, was this beneficial to your students? And I would love for you to see the feedback because it is amazing, it's heartwarming, it's making a difference. So we, Forest Hills Northern Corridor has been kind enough to let us pilot this program, to help us get it right, to perfect it. We, you know, we knew we didn't know everything going into this, but we've learned a lot, and we've pivoted along the way, we've made the changes that we needed to make, and we're really proud to, to represent it and to offer it. We have had so many offers from other districts to bring us in. We've held off on that because I had to get it right, we needed to get it right, we're finally there. So we would love to make this a bigger program and embody everyone in Forest Hills, all three channels instead of just Northern, if that's something that you would like. We, you know, we're happy to do that. But, you know, we can support that, and we just need some support from Forest Hills because we're, we're selling T-shirts and selling hats just to make this program happen. And all of the expenses that go with it, you know, it's, it's a lot. So we wanted to just bring it to light and let you know what it is and the impact that it's having. And then if you would like us to expand it within the district, we would love to entertain that idea. We want to keep it as home-based as we can, but there are lots of different districts that are asking for it. So that's why I wanted to come here, let you know what it is. And if you are interested in asking any questions to our ambassadors that are here, that would be great. Otherwise, they're here to support in any way. So I would, I'm happy to answer any questions or from whomever.
Thank you, Karen. This is great, wonderful to hear the update. I know there are probably a few people that have questions. I would like to hear, we did hear from the video, but since we have students here, is there anything that you would like to add and share with the board tonight?
Amelia Shaw and Grant Dean.
Yeah, I'd say, this is my first year as a game changer, I'm a junior. And I came into, everyone was saying how amazing it was going to be, oh, you're going to meet these kids, and you're, you're going to miss them so much when you're done, and you're going to make all these great connections. And I thought, okay, sure. I feel like a lot of people say that about a lot of things. But actually coming down, down to Meadowbrook and sitting with fourth graders was very transformative because I think even as high schoolers, we sort of forget, I forget how small fourth graders are. And I forget, you know, what the daily life is. And so every time I would be looking through the learning target or whatever it was, the lesson that we were teaching, I'd find myself reflecting on how I had been acting the last month and, you know, kind of, did I, did I use that, you know, friendship pillar with myself? So that was something I didn't expect. I thought I was just going to be talking to fourth graders about, you know, how to use integrity, but it definitely impacted me as well. And I think it's super important because teachers can say, can tell kids, you know, to be good people, et cetera. But the high schoolers, having high schoolers come in kind of brings the cool to it in some way. Because when you're a young, you know, fourth grader, in my case, you, as they said in the video, look up and you think these high schoolers are the greatest thing. And so to have that positive example and to bring the good, clean, fun energy, I just think it's super important to connect the ages together because we learn so much from each other.
Outstanding.
Okay, so first of all, I would like to apologize for not representing as much as Amelia. I didn't know I'd be speaking tonight. But, I don't know.
We're all, we're all friends. It's okay.
But no, there was something so surreal and emotional being back at Meadowbrook because that's where I started. And personally, I believe that kindergarten through fourth grade are your most formative years because it sets up who you're going to be as a person. So being back there and seeing like, all like, all these memories just came flooding back, and I was like, oh my God, everything is so small here, like, nothing was higher than my knee. And so first of all, that was shocking. But by sitting with the fourth graders and going through each of these lessons with them, it was so amazing and special, not only to see how much they were growing over the course of our lessons, but how much I have grown since then. Because I know my fourth graders loved me. Like, I like to joke with my friends, I'll be like, oh, your kids like me more than they like you. And I didn't even have them. But just like, my kids really wanted to like, be my friend, they wanted more than just the lesson, they wanted my life, you know, to know about it. And so, and so I'd be teaching them, they'd be like, oh, were you like this in fourth grade? And I'd be like, no. So just to see how far I've come and how I've been able to help them progress over the course of this year, seeing kids come out of their shells, or kids that wouldn't want to answer questions in the beginning, to raising their hand for each thing, that was so incredible. And I don't know, I just really loved being able to make a connection with them. And on the last day of game changers, we were like, oh, by the way, it's our last day. And my kids were like, oh, are you going to be our game changer next year? And I was like, no. But like, it was so sad because I feel like I know them more than I did in the beginning. And I'm so happy that I got to have this like journey with them, and I got to set them up for the fifth, sixth building. Because by the time they have game changers next, I'll be gone. But it was so emotional being like, oh my gosh, they're like, on this journey that I was on, and they're going to the next step. And that's why game changer is so important because you, you learn more about the kids you teach, but you learn more about yourself at the same time. And I thought that was really special.
Thank you. You know what really jumped out at me? I mean, a number of things that you said, but did everybody hear him say, my kids? So we spent an evening tonight celebrating community. We started with students sharing about community, and when you say, my kids, this makes me want to cry because I just feel like there's 10,000 of our kids, so. Any other comments? I'm done. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, now we really are going into what would be the normal business part of the meeting. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
So moved.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. Make a motion to approve consent grouping seven, A through C.
D.
D, sorry, thank you.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Superintendent Beam, are there some items here? It's a long list that you would like to pull out, draw attention to?
Yes, this is a consent grouping at this time of the year where we have a variety of annual authorizations that we bring before the board. But I would like to just call out a few things. We are formally taking board action tonight to approve the resolution for all of our retiring staff members, and each of them received individual copy of that honoring their years of service. Also, this is a time where we renew our membership with the Michigan High School Athletic Association. This is also a time where we ask parents to represent the district for the parent advisors for special education and to serve with the PACE group, P-A-S-E, for, on the Kent Intermediate School District, where parents come together from all around the county in the 20 individual school districts. So thank you to Jody Biko, Catherine Franklin, and Jane Weatherford for agreeing to serve in that role as parents to represent our community with the PACE group. Also, the employment of new administrative staff is one of the items in the consent grouping tonight. And congratulations to Dawn Harrima. Dawn is going to be our new principal at Meadowbrook Elementary, and she'll be on board with us here in August, so we are excited about that. And then also, we're very excited, a number of new professional staff in our teaching ranks are joining us, and that's in the agenda packet tonight. As well as, we are very pleased to present addendums to settled collective bargaining agreements. We do have a settlement that takes us all the way through next year, and that settlement was achieved about 12 months ago. But we have an addendum to those contracts, and we're working with all of our groups. And tonight, we bring two forward. One for our Forest Hills Education Association that represents all of our teachers, and one, an enhancement that represents all of our bus drivers as well. And we are very pleased to bring these forward. And with the board's approval tonight after the ratification of our employee groups, specifically, one of the issues we've been trying to deal with is to bring more bus drivers to our wonderful, outstanding group that we have right now, we just need more of them. And with these contract enhancements, we are bringing forth a compensation package that puts us at the top for experienced bus drivers and bus drivers who are brand new, within 40 cents of the top in the county. But also, we are providing the ability for our bus drivers to earn full family health insurance benefits, and that is an additional $19,000 benefit. So we, we're very excited about that and pleased with all of our people that came together to make that happen as well for this enhancement. That's what I wanted to call out from the large consent grouping list tonight.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, I guess we will move to, we'll start with Nicole for finance, some highlights you want to draw attention to, please.
I have one question for Superintendent Beam. For the bus drivers, where would people find the information to apply for a position? Is it on the website?
Yes, it is on the website. You can find information there, you can find it, we've got signs all around the community. But we will do another communications push as well with these new enhancements that we're hopefully approving here tonight.
Great, thank you. For the business, for the finance side, we have the payment bills for the month. We also have a whole bunch of action items, so I will go through them fast, but again, our items are always on the website if you want to know more. We have a couple of, the first three are from our ESR3 funding. One is for the Tech Town Special Education Curriculum Resources. Tech Town is the vendor, it's for $25,371. Again, it's the ESR3 Equalization Funding. This is for the Special Education. The next one is for Writing Resource Books Training for Special Education Teachers. It's from Writing Revolution, $27,200, ESR3 Equalization. The next one is for Professional Learning for Special Education Teachers on Orton-Gilman Reading, which is for dyslexia children. This comes from the ESR3 Equalization for $32,190. The fourth one is for Decodable Books, K through second grade, all buildings, all grades, all classrooms. This is for $68,084. This is ESR3 Formula and Equalization Funding. The fifth one is for renewal of Finance, HR, and Student Management System for Power School. A lot of us see Power School on the front end, which is for our students. We have a backend as well, which is for HR and Finance. That is for, this helps with easier integration of students, or excuse me, hiring and onboarding of our teachers and staff. So it's $140,181. That's from the General Fund. The internet, there's no change, our internet service, there's no change in the service level. Last year, we increased it dramatically because we did have a lot of access through COVID. This is through AT&amp;T, that's $32,000 through the General Fund. Annually, we go through our laptops, we have a large fleet of laptops. We are retiring 480, 458, excuse me, laptops this year. So we look at, excuse me, the laptops, desktops, computers, all that good stuff, they do a quick assessment. So we're purchasing them from REMC and MHEC, purchasing cooperatives, and that's a lot, yeah. For $430,000, this is from the 2021 Capital Projects. Chartwell Management Contract Renewal, not, this is for $200,000, not to exceed. This is from our fund service, our, excuse me, food fund service. We have First Class Mail, which is from KCI, this is from the General Fund. It's really hard to predict this amount, but usually we do not go over $90,000 for the First Class Mail. Our paper purchase is for the 2023 year, which is from REMC, and that's a cooperative, and that is not to exceed $160,000, which is from the General Fund. And the last item, which is an annual action item to certify the tax levy, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this later in the month, but just so we're kind, or generally aware, we have three mil, or excuse me, three different categories of levies that we, we need to know about. One is for the general operation, there's 17.78, that's for mills on the non-homestead property. The next one is a point, it's on the recreation, it's .98 mills on all property. And the next one is the debt service, which is a 6.1, which is on all property as well. We'll go into more detail on this in one of our next meetings, and we'll look for an approval at our next board meeting. So just so everyone's aware. Bond updates for our construction updates, Maggie's going to go into this a little bit more, I believe with her conversation. But we did talk about our design for Ada Vista and as well Pine Ridge. The bids for the administration center and transition building are coming in, I believe they came in this last week, are starting to come in. We also had a conversation around our solar update. We are looking to do solar to look at performance at our peak times. So we are capturing the, the difference in the peaks, so we're not paying that. And they were working with a consulting firm that should narrow it down to three bids by the end of this month and hopefully do an installation by the end of the summer and to early fall. And that is it. It's a lot, but it's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole? All right, yes, that is a lot. All right, well then, I will turn it over to Maggie.
All right. We did not have an instructional highlight this month at our curriculum meeting. Instead, we did, as Nicole just alluded to, we heard from Tom Kaywood from Tower Pinkster, who gave us a really great presentation on the plans for Ada Vista and Pine Ridge. Just, just the the redesign of those buildings. Just an incredible infusion of collaborative space in those redesigns, space that just really lent itself to more dynamic learning, really thinking about the students and what the students needed in those designs, and that's being finalized, and that is going to be communicated to families sometime later this year, once those go to bid as well. Just talking about when those projects will be started. We also do, as Nicole said, we have a number of requests for board approval, for review. The first one is The Lincoln Highway by Amort Toles for Honors English X at Eastern High School. We also have Sai by Neil Schusterman for English IX and Honors English IX at Eastern High School. And then, I'm going to go ahead and attempt these next two titles, I was a Spanish minor for one semester.
Okay.
So, the first one that is looking for board approval is Baseball en Abril y Otros Cuantos by Gary Soto, and then Antes de Ser Libres, which Before We Were Free by Julia Alvarez. Also, a few special education resources, the first one being Orton-Gillingham, as Nicole mentioned, that is Training for our Special Education Teachers in Skills and Best Practices for Students with Dyslexia. Additionally, looking for approval for The Writing Revolution, which is additional writing support for our Special Education students, and Teach Town, which is Life and Social Skills. And then again, those K-2 district-wide decodable books. And then, not discussed in depth at our curriculum meeting, but I do think it's worth mentioning again, this one out to everybody with current enrolled students in the district, just the iXL is now available for parents of all of our kids in the content areas of math and language arts. It's an online program, every parent can access that through their children's Clever platform, and we as parents have until August to do that at home with our kids, August 1st to do that at home with our kids. You can take a diagnostic test, and then they can practice math and language arts throughout the summer, and it really targets where they're starting to kind of help build those skills and to prevent that summer learning loss. And then, once they return to school in the fall, that will pick back up in their classrooms. So that is a fantastic resource that we have this summer, in addition to the Kids Read Now program for our elementary students. And so that is, that is it for curriculum this month.
Fantastic. All right. Any questions for Maggie? All right, well, with that, I think we need a roll call vote to approve our consent grouping.
All right. Mr. Mashad?
Yes.
Dr. Fossum?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes, and Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
All right. With that, I think the next item on our agenda, we have some informational items and then the superintendent's report, so I will turn that over to you, Superintendent Beam.
Thank you, Mrs. Callahan. It's that time of the year where we are hiring new staff, but we also have staff who are leaving us, some are relocating, some are switching careers, some are moving to other school districts, and we wish all of them well, and I've approved those resignations consistent with district policy, and I'll just go right into my superintendent's report.
Yes, please.
All right. This has been certainly a wonderful evening tonight, I want to say thank you to Jeremy Cox here at the Fine Arts Center for all of your help and support here tonight, Jeremy and Jane. Also, our game changers, I know, as Mrs. Sadler mentioned, for some of our ambassadors, well, for all of our ambassadors, it's finals time, so they may have scooted out, but thank you to Karen and to all of our ambassadors and everything that's happening with Game Changers and staff and retired staff across the district that are helping train our students with that, it's a wonderful program. I'd also like to say a special word of thanks to our three school resource officers. Thank you, Deputy Dunnebeck, Deputy Green, Deputy Saboda, I see a couple of the guys back in the back, thank you for your service constantly to our community, to working with our staff and our administrators and making improvements throughout the district, and putting your life on the line to always keep us safe. So thank you, Ben, thank you, Jim, thank you. I'd also just like to say thank you to our community. Our community during this time, as we've been thinking again about the safety and security of our young ones, they've been reaching out with offers of support, with questions, with many, many conversations, and I sent out a letter to all of our community letting them know all the things that we do in the area of safety and security that we don't always talk about, but perhaps needed to remind all of us in that work that never ends. As I like to say, our second job is making sure that students learn, our first job is making sure that we send them home safe and sound at the end of the day, and hopefully a little bit better for having spent the time with us. We continue to work with our community to make things better in our schools. Tonight, we celebrated our guiding principles, and these are aspirational, we always work to try to live up to those, and I think as one of our honorees said, we work hard, but we're human, we don't always get there, but working together, we have fantastic assets throughout our community. We've been working on solving problems and solving issues. We know that community members have come forward and said, hey, we've got some books that as parents, we don't feel comfortable with our students having unfettered access to that, so we've been working on it. We have over 250,000 books in our collection throughout the district, and there's been a list circulating around the country of about 25 or so books that are cause for concern on percentages, that's about 1/100 of 1%, but even though that's a small number, we still want to work together to solve this issue. So thanks to our instruction team and working with our principals, we've put those books that have portions of them with adult content, just like we would if you needed to access a movie that needed a rating that required parent approval, the same thing for our books on that. And even though we have some schools that maybe share, like an eastern, a media center between the middle school and the high school, we've segregated those pieces, and much to the chagrin of my own daughter who wants to browse every high school book in the collection about astronomy and space and all of those things, she came home with a permission slip and said, Dad, I need you to sign this so I can look at the high school collection. I said, nope, you're still a middle schooler, and Dad's not going to sign on that, so she wasn't pleased, but that's fine, we want to put that power with our parents. And so thank you to our community coming forward and working with us, that's one of our guiding principles as we work to collaborate on these issues. Another one that we've been working on is busing, and school busing is an important issue, and I'm so grateful for community members that have stepped forward, I'm grateful for community members who said, yeah, I can drive a bus, and I can help out, and I can get trained, and help kids and help our community in the process. And I'm grateful for community members that have come together with our Transportation Task Force to look at best practices all throughout the area, and to look at what we can do to help solve this problem, continuing for our community as well. I'm appreciative to all of our community for stepping up and helping in all sorts of different ways throughout, not only this school year, but throughout this entire pandemic. It's been very challenging for parents, I know, and for everyone working in education, so I appreciate that spirit of collaboration and open communication, coming together to care for our kids. I want to say, just to echo the words, oh, a special thank you also to our Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation. They have stepped up and been amazing partners for us, and Elizabeth Brink in her first year as the Foundation Director, and Taima Saab as our Board Chair, and all of the board and all of their volunteer hours to help our staff and extend student learning in so many different ways, so thank you to our foundation. I would also just like to echo the words of Ben Emden, who was with us earlier tonight, and all of our staff members, no matter what their job title may be, they are here to help our community's children. And to see the incredible dedication and the selfless service that they have provided is truly heartening, and in my time in education, I've never seen a group of staff step up to help kids. It's been a challenging time, but the reason why it's been challenging is people have been exerting themselves to make sure we buffer kids from the most difficult side effects of this global challenge that we've all been going through, and staff have been doing a tremendous job. And I would just echo, I think, Mary, you were talking about graduation, and to see the 765 graduates come across our stage, and to hear what they have to say, it truly is impressive, and it's a testament to all of our staff members throughout the district and all of their very hard work. I'd finally just like to have one more, just brief presentation, and we've already seen him tonight, but just a special parting gift from me and on behalf of the board, Tim Shaw, if, Tim, I think you're still here, Tim, yes, you're right there, thank you. Tim, all your years at Meadowbrook, I remember when you came to the final interview and you said, because you were working in another fine district and doing outstanding work, and I said, Tim, why do you want to come here? And he said, I'm just looking for more of a challenge, and I think we provided that for you, Tim. So, Tim, thank you so much for everything you've done to build a phenomenal school that helps kids in so many ways, as I think of the program for our youngest learners with cognitive impairments and families that come there, and everything that you've done working collaboratively with our Student Services Program, and the work you've done with our Mandarin immersion program, to think of five-year-olds talking in Mandarin through half their day and half their curriculum, it's truly amazing how you stepped in with that. And then all that you do for just all the kids at Meadowbrook and the incredible growth that takes place there, that has your stamp all over it. So, Tim, we are so grateful that you decided to spend the final chapter, the last chapter of your educational administrative career with us here at Forest Hills, and who knows where it will lead to next. He started his year, he started his career as an engineer, and we got him to be an elementary school principal, so I'm so excited to see what will happen next. So, Tim, this is for you, congratulations.
Outstanding. I love this, awards from end to end, fantastic. All right, at this time, we have a couple more things that we are going to do. First, I will open this up for board communication, is there anything that we did not cover tonight? Is there anything? No, please, if there is.
I'll just keep it really short, I just want to, I just want to make sure that I remind everyone that the Foundation is having their annual Charlie Anderson Memorial Golf Tournament on the 21st at Thornapple Point. Again, you can go to FHPSF.org to get more information about that, to sign up, to participate in that. And then the other thing that the Foundation did last month that happened after our May meeting was that they hosted a thank you brunch for all of the PTO members throughout the district. It was just their way of saying thank you to the PTOs, it brought all of the PTO executive boards together, they could share best practices, share ideas, that's not really ever happened before with the PTOs, and so it was, it was a really great opportunity to kind of learn about different things that were happening in different buildings. We kind of get like, you know, siloed into our elementary schools or our middle schools, and some of those ideas don't always get shared, and so this was a great way for that to happen. So that was also because of the Foundation, so that was fantastic. So, that was it, short and sweet.
Fantastic. It is great when you get a whole bunch of PTO people together, a lot of ideas come out of that, so fantastic. All right, well, there's definitely been a theme-
One more quick thing.
-theme of community, so yeah, oh, go ahead, yeah, I was going to ask if anybody else, go ahead.
Oh, that would be me. I'm just thanking you. We have come out of two years of crazy practices and procedures, and we still have obligations, and I sprang upon you a few weeks ago that our newer members needed to be trained on our Marzano District Leader Evaluation Tool, and it's such a crazy time of year, you have graduates, you have travel, you have Odyssey the Mind, you have crew, you have everything, and you all pulled it off. Those of you that needed to be there, so thank you. One more point of pride to be a part of a group that is so willing to get the important stuff done, so thank you all for doing that.
Excellent. Any other communications? Yes, I would agree, we, community from end to end, for sure, so fantastic. And in the spirit of that, when I popped in for a meeting at Admin the other day, I think it was literally the 175th day of school, and I was walking down the hall, and I could hear people talking and laughing, and I actually heard academic terms like "lesson", and I looked in, and there, it appeared to be social studies teachers, was that, and I thought, they're 175 days into the year, and they were talking about what they're going to do next year with enthusiasm, and I thought, what a cool place this is, so fantastic. All right, so with that, I would love to hear from any other community members that would like to address the board. We've reviewed, if any of you are new this evening, there are copies of the rules and guidelines and policies for public comments, so if you would like to make public comments, we invite you to do that, come to the podium, and if you could limit your, state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. The other thing is, we listen to all the public comments, we all take copious notes of these, and the community input always influences the work the board, well, the board ultimately gets funneled back to the district representatives that do the hard work in our classrooms and buildings every day, so we take good notes, and we will make sure that if you need follow-up, we'll get to you or get you to the right person that can help you. So, if anyone would like to address the board, now is the time.
Hello. All right, I'm going to try to keep this nice and short. To say this year has been a doozy is an understatement. In the face of ongoing attacks on not only our schools and education as a whole, but also on your characters, and the mental burden that comes along with doing that, in the face of adversity, you have all handled this year with strength and dignity. A record number of my own personal friends and family, because I come from a family of many, many educators, and a lot of them, honestly, probably over 50% of them have expressed that they are seriously considering early retirement, as this has been one of the worst, actually, most say the worst year of their entire teaching careers, hands down. So all of you sitting up here, thank you. Thank you for sticking with the FHPS community when it was probably really attempting to quit. Thank you for not giving up and succumbing to the pressures of those who do not support you. Thank you for continuing to fight for our kids with programs like GLI and SEL, so our kids feel supported and also learn to be global thinkers, learners, and compassionate, empathetic individuals. I honestly really just want to come up here and thank you all, because from the bottom of my heart, and so many parents, you have all been through so much this year, and I think any normal person would break and crack under the pressure of any kind of leadership position in this day and age, but the fact that you all stuck through this whole year is impressive beyond belief, and you all deserve, you know, a round of applause, you all deserve all of the thanks in the world, and there are so many parents who really appreciate everything that you've done. I'm not going to continue to go on, just know that you are all appreciated, and there are not enough words to express how much we appreciate you not giving up on us and our children. Thank you.
My name is Doug Lee. I'd like to, on this final meeting at the school year, talk about Kristin Cavell, and how her value- how her values do not line up with the majority of parents in Forest Hills. To begin, we need to go back in time. Let's use 2010 as an example. Mary Vonck, do you remember when people in Forest Hills would introduce themselves on where they attended church, not where they worked or their political views? Do you remember when the community supported you as a whole on the Board of Education, when this community was united and not divided? I always use you because you have the most history on this board. So, what created all this division? Individuals in authority that did not align with the same values. They use nice sounding words to convince you that there's a better way for all. Because of this word games, the majority on the board does not investigate the details or consequences of programs purchased. Things like diversity, equity, inclusion. Kristin Koval publicly is a founding member of organization called Forest Hills for Social Change. As a matter of fact, this is the same group that also supports the Support FHPS Group of Radical Agitators. Do you remember when this group weighed red cards at a board meeting stating fact check when others presented actual undisputable facts? It was an embarrassment and on that day laid the loss many supporters. I'd like to show you a post on an event at a church we had three weeks ago that was officiated by a pastor as we prayed for individuals running for government office. Kristin Koval commented on a negative post on this meeting with two very, very important comments that should tell you everything about her. Here's her, here's her post.
Hey, Doug, we're not supposed to attack board members during this board meeting. It's about a business that takes place by the board and the district.
Okay. I'm not saying you need to be a Christian on this board, but we do expect you to be neutral. We don't ask you to provide-
Doug, I think we were kind of getting the, the point. Is there a public comment about business at the district that we could cover?
I'm covering it. I'm not saying you need to be a Christian on this board, but we do expect you to be neutral. We don't ask you to provide or encourage Bible classes in a public school. We do that in our church. If not neutral, how can you represent the best interests of all children and leave religion and sexuality to parents to teach? There's a lot of good things in this school. I won't deny that. We're here in an amazing building that's brought a lot of students here. But the grooming and the SEL negates all the good. We need to get rid of CRT.
I'm Cherry Talzma and I used to teach in Forest Hills and I live off Butrick. To follow up on what he said, Forest Hills obviously has many excellent programs. I know because I used to work here. And, and I commend you for all of that and I understand why everybody's so proud. But there are a few things that need to be addressed. And one of them is some of the things that we are seeing that have come through this art display that you had up. Here is one that is particularly disturbing and I will read the words on it. For anybody who can't see it, I will read the words. To me, this is an indication that something's going on that needs to be addressed. The words say, "Shh, lay down on the bed. This is our secret. This is normal. You will let in trouble. This doesn't feel right. I'm uncomfortable. So many times, I lost count. You don't want to ruin the family, but I am hurting so much, I can't. Help me. You ruined my life. I can't live in a lie anymore. Why me? This is your fault. I was so young. You took everything from me. Can't feel." This is what was put up on the wall. And this is not the only one. There were others depicting sexual abuse, cocaine snorting, devil horns, transgenderism, and satanic symbols. The book Nightmares in the Sky about summoning demons was included in the display. I believe this is called normalizing. Are we paying our schools to teach witchcraft? It sure sounds like it to me. How is this appropriate in a taxpayer-funded school system of underage children? I have many questions. Why would any art teacher, in this case, Gray Steins of Central High and Kendra Antoine of Northern High, choose pieces depicting these things and even include the student's name? Why would John DiStefano, the director of FAC, approve of these even after he saw them? Why were third graders allowed to view these as well without permission from the parents? That's against school policy. These kids paraded right through these and you should have seen the other, maybe you didn't see them, but you should have seen the other ones. They were horrific. Devils' horns, hexes, satanic signs. Did anyone reach out to these children? Their parents? I'm told no. One of the teachers hung up on a parent who asked that question, but the obvious outcry of these students were on public display for all to see. Why was a culture and climate survey then sent out to students asking them how they were feeling and encouraging them to seek counseling? This coming after a protest instigated by SEL teaching subjected students who were a captive audience was allowed inside the school. What about their rights? Seems to me these students are deliberately being indoctrinated and groomed to accept and embrace alternative lifestyles, pedophilia, and the occult. Let's keep in mind that these kids are all going to be, they're being groomed, they could be sex traffickers. It's going on everywhere and every school is going on inside families. You're setting these kids up for this. It's illegal to expose children to porn. So, how can it be okay to groom them to become confused and accept this dystopian mindset? I want to know if this board will investigate or are you in agreement with this agenda?
Your time, thanks. Thanks.
My name is John Konserdine. It's my second board meeting at Forest Hills School in my 30 years in the district. I am a teacher. They're not here. My kids were raised here and thank you. Raising kids is hard. You did better than I expected and I mean that as a big compliment. Education is a messy and ineffective and oddball process. You never know when it's really happening and that's why you have to explore the world. My kids have been out in the world now for 15 years from here, each of them. And they're doing well this year. You're as happy as your least happy child, so things are pretty good. And that, they're building on what they've learned here. You can't ignore people from the world. I wasn't expecting to make a comment, so I felt compelled to move and say, the other board meeting I attended was online about sometime in COVID a year ago, discussion about the Global Leaders Initiative. And I thought, I hadn't heard of it, but I went on to listen about it and I kind of approved of this initiative. And I had my number to speak, about number 112, I think. And I thought, three minutes of time. And I started to listen. By about number 30, I thought, I don't need to speak. These graduates, these kids, they're speaking for themselves. Listen to the kids in this system. We have a messy, a diverse, and a problematic world. Let's work with these kids so they can face that. Please. I've been an educator on three continents. You follow good, if not always better, I mean, pretty good practice. We'll give that. We don't have to be divisive. We have to live, we have to live with dissent. But please, little breath of sanity, little breath, take a deep breath as we go. Education involves dealing with strange things. That's what education is. I mean, I've taught computer science, I've taught English, I've taught a bunch of things. You know, work with it, please. So, I felt compelled to speak by the current situation, having lively avoided it since my kids left school, you know? But I've come back as a voice from the past saying, make this work. And I'll leave you with that and I'll save my time.
Thank you.
Did I give my name?
John Konserdine.
Yeah, I just didn't want to meet fact, just thank you.
Again, you folks have really done some amazing work. A lot of good stuff, obviously. Congrats on all the good stuff that you've gotten right. However, my name is Jarrett Jacobowski. Been in the district for more than 30 years. And anyway, my wife and I and most others here who are committed to reform are, pardon my pronoun, just freshmen. Many of us have not even engaged for a whole school year, but we have certainly learned a lot over these last months. On the other hand, I doubt the board has truly learned over our times together. Perhaps some of us occasionally may have been a bit too shrill. Regardless, you have not really been listening. And if you do not listen, you will not hear. If you do not hear, you will not think. If you do not think, you will not learn. Consequently, you have not really learned, integrated, understood much of what we found so very troubling about our schools. It's said that life imitates art. You and a cadre of your young, woke teachers know that, obviously. The literary and graphic art you endorse in our kids' libraries is compelling evidence of life choices you want our children to imitate, to live. But this is only the tip of the tip of the iceberg called social emotional learning, a Titanic-sized disaster that those charting the course of our schools insist on sailing into. However, there is so much more that is wrong with the direction you have been charting. Inept management of busing, suspicious lack of transparency, dubious at best spending of our tax dollars, plummeting performance ratings, erosion of academic focus, dropping enrollment, and more. Well, I just wanted to inform you that we of this freshman class of school reformers have gone to senior status. This school year was just a warm-up. And by this summer's end, you will find us back here, tanned, rested, invigorated, and we will have leapfrogged up to our postgraduate degrees. We are very quick studies. So, come fall, y'all, be prepared for some real surprises. To be continued. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Raven Kincaid and I'm a junior at Forest Hills Northern.
And my name is Maya Strang.
And I originally came up here with something to say that was unrelated to what we were talking about. After some comments I heard from some people who came up regarding art, I have been shown in this establishment, one of the pieces being a trans chest, which I was grateful enough to paint myself. I painted it from experience. My sibling is trans and has experienced bullying, harassment, and even their friends have experienced physical violence from classmates. I chose to paint on this because it's something near and dear to my heart and I know how difficult it can be for trans kids growing up in the school system. This was a part of my AP portfolio, showing pieces that represent insecurities individuals deal with and how to normalize them and create a more, sorry to use the word inclusive, environment for all students. But to go on to what I was about to talk to before, that comment was made. So, we are both juniors and we are in the Project Next program. And over the last three years, we have learned how to be critical thinkers, leaders, and public speakers. As Michiganders, we deserve discuss, deserve the ability to discuss race, politics, and culture. Additionally, as soon-to-be voters, we must form our opinions and beliefs to become successful adults after graduation. As Forest Hills students, we know that our thoughts are our own. We don't feel pressured to think a certain way, but instead, faculty and teachers encourage us to question everything and form our own opinions. Discussing race doesn't divide the student body, it unites us, creating more empathy for others and a deeper understanding of people with different experiences.
The above topics that were just mentioned are everyday topics of our future. These topics aren't going to go away. By allowing us to practice these discussions in safe places such as our schools, it will prepare us for our future and allow us to be critical and thoughtful adults. Getting rid of these topics in schools will do more harm than help.
And thank you so much to the Forest Hills School Board for staying strong through all of this and creating an environment that kids can flourish. And thank you so much for all the work you do. Thank you.
I'd just like to read some information for, from the Pioneer Institute.
Could you say your name?
My name's Greg King.
Say the name.
Greg King.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, from the Pioneer Institute, it's multiple problems with push for social emotional learning in K-12 education. Social emotional learning has been billed as a transformational tool that will propel students to greater academic achievement and personal fulfillment. Unfortunately, as a new Pioneer Institute study makes clear, the research evidence to back up these claims is thin and unpersuasive. However, the risks SEL poses to student privacy and health are significant. Proponents of SEL call for focusing less on academic content and knowledge in schools and more on student attributes, mindsets, values, and behaviors. Not only are the goals of SEL ill-defined, but they also raise significant unanswered questions about what attitudes should be promoted. It's one thing to direct your own moral, ethical, and emotional development or that of your children, said Jane Robins, co-author. But having a governor, government vendor or unqualified public school officials implement an SEL curriculum based on Coffey-tail psychology is quite another. Educational software developers report to have created products that can determine a number of sensitive personality traits through students' interaction with digital platforms. Much of this monitoring occurs without the consent of children or their parents. Some software, especially for video gaming, goes beyond accessing traits and aims to encourage the production of students who are well-suited for the workforce, development-centered education. This technology, when coupled with SEL, will further spread the recent wave of amateur unqualified psychoanalysts in schools, said Dr. Karen Heffram, MD, who co-authored this study. Given the certainty around diagnosis and treatment of mental or emotional problems, even by highly-trained physicians, the SEL movement runs the risk of further increasing the trend toward dangerous over-diagnosis and over-medication. Social, I'll just follow up. In place of SEL, the co-authors urge educators to refocus on a key lever that led to Massachusetts' rise to the highest-performing K-12 state in the nation. Genuine academic achievement through state and locally-developed standards, assessments, and curriculum, rather than classroom content by dubious academic value based on pop psychology. Thank you.
Hi.
My name's David McGrath. I am at 369 Stone Falls Drive in Ada. I have three children, actually now two, one just graduated from Northern High, but two kids in the Northern School District yet. And I've been extremely, extremely happy about my children's education, starting actually at Meadowbrook. about my children's education, starting actually at Meadowbrook School, all in the Chinese immersion program. And just, it's an amazing school district. I'm so happy my children are here, and I'm so grateful for your all's efforts and the efforts of all that work for this district in all capacities, from administration to teachers and the staff that keep the schools clean and functioning, and the bus drivers, and, well, I know I won't, like another speaker, or Mr. Emden had said, I'll never cover them all. I wanted to just make one point, and that is that I support the teaching and learning about race and racism in our public schools. Racism is an undeniable fact of our nation's founding history, and it remains a significant problem today. Some people have argued that teaching about racism in our country should be only given by parents and communities like churches. They say moral and ethical issues are not appropriate topics in the public schools of our nation, but I think that the public school is not only an appropriate place to learn about racism, it is essential, because racism sometimes is learned at home. The public school can therefore be an antidote to racist ideology learned elsewhere, and schools can reinforce and add texture to positive civic morality taught in most homes. Some worry that white children will be made to feel guilty to learn more about our country's racist past and present. Oops. I'll end it there, other than to say again, thank you to you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Galloway, and I think I go to church with you, St. Matthew. I just wanted to talk today because I guess I want to kind of address everybody. This will be my last board meeting.
Sarah, you need to address the board. The comments are for the Board of Education.
Just want to say goodbye to everybody.
For the Board of Education.
Okay.
You're here to address us. Sorry.
Well, I guess I want to say this is my last board meeting. We've decided to move to the free state of Florida. I feel like, you know, with all the things that happened over the last couple of years, I feel like Michigan has failed us. I feel like Forest Hills Schools has failed us. I, you know, I think I'm going to go to a school where they have some laws in place where my son won't be urinating at the urinal, and girls will leave the room, stall, which is a violation of his privacy. So Florida, although it doesn't have everything together, and it's not a perfect place, I understand that, I just feel like, I just feel like I've been let down here. We're going for other purposes too, but I really just want a fresh start. And I've had a great conversation with you, Mary, you know, and you understand, you said you got to do what you got to do. Unfortunately, I feel like that's sad at the same time, because I feel like I'm being pushed out. I don't feel like my values are respected and aligned entirely at the school. I feel like the school needs to be a neutral place, and it's not. My son comes home, and he's all fired up about, I mean, kids call him racist, they call him sexist, they call him a homophobe, they call him all kinds of names, just because he questions certain things. I get called those things because I have, I just put certain facts out, and on Nextdoor app, I only put one comment for one thing, I get, I'm set off for thirty days, I can't even get on it. And it's like, you said, I'm an angry white woman, like, how do you even know who I am? So anyway, it's just a toxic environment. I feel like it's just not a place I want to be anymore. Michigan is just going down the toilet, in my opinion, so. I'm sorry to leave all of you, my fellow Army, but I wish you the best. I'm going to keep praying for this school, because I do, I want this school to succeed. And I just want you guys all to know that not everybody feels safe here, and not everybody feels welcome, so. Congratulations on your new place, and I'm sorry I won't be able to see you much at church anymore. But thank you, and wish you all the best, and this is the tough world we live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Doyle. I think you know where I live. With two days left of school, I have two days left of driving the school bus this school year. And I qualify that as this school year because I'm not making any commitments one way or the other as to what the future will hold. I didn't expect to be driving a school bus this year, so. But I'm here to speak tonight because I've been humbled by the process of trying to help solve this problem. It's a much more complex and bigger problem than I originally estimated. I thought I could have an impact, or a bigger impact than I was able to have this year. But I'm also inspired. I'm inspired by the people, I'm inspired by the community, and I know that there are better days ahead. I will stay involved in this, and one of the ways that I'll be staying involved is I wanted to inform you Superintendent Beam, you, the members of the school board, and the entire Forest Hills community, that I've been able to persuade certain powers at Grand Valley State University to launch a research study on the transportation labor shortage problem. And so it's going to be done through the Applied Computing Institute. We're going to be bringing to bear computer scientists, data scientists, economists, public policy experts, and other domain experts to try to understand this problem, the facts underneath it, the real information that needs to be part of identifying and designing solutions. And so we look forward to launching the study after I stop driving a school bus, and we'll be directing the work of graduate students and undergraduate students, so they'll be learning on many levels as a result. We certainly hope that we can look forward to Forest Hills' full, active, and ongoing participation in the study. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Boone, and I took down some notes from the FHPS Foundation Contest Award winners. It was a great presentation, and I thought that we could learn a lot from those kids and their quotes. The question that they were asked was, "What does 'community' mean to me?" And one said, "A community lives, grows, and learns together." Another said, "People from different walks of life coming together." Another one said, "We are all one community, stronger together. Respect and be kind to each other." And then we went on to hear the Karen Sadler presentation, and something stuck with me about that, too. She said, "What are you doing when no one is watching?" And we're trying to teach our kids to think about that through their actions, and we need to lead by example with that. So as you all head to your conferences and conventions this summer and send our teachers to professional development, and they learn how to divide and point out the racial and sexual and religious and political differences, and you work to fill the big footprints left behind by many people who were very good workers and servants for Forest Hills for many, many years, I'm just asking you to please be fighters for our kids. Think about that when you're trying to fill these new positions. Fight for neutrality in the face of all things divisive. Take a step back and look at the agendas being pushed on every educational association's website and social media right now, just this month. Look, and if you don't see it, contact me, and I'd love to sit down with you and show you what you're missing. It's there for everyone to see. Please fight for all of our kids for what they have in common. They're all eager to learn and have fun with their friends at school, and the more you point out their differences through social engineering, the more anger and division you're creating. And I'm scared about that, and I don't feel safe for my kids and our community, given the violence and the murders that we're seeing in our schools. So do we want to be the cause of that anger and violence, or do we want to be the solution? Please fight for all of our children, for their safety and for their future. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Menger, 185 Taos Avenue Northeast in Ada, and I don't have prepared remarks. I'm up here to support my children and their friends. Some are gay, some are straight, some are white, some are black, some are brown, they're all different, they're all friends, they all come together. They all need to be supported and feel welcome. Every child that walks in that school needs to feel safe and welcome. Now, I know people before me have been speaking, alluding to the fact that children are being taught and indoctrinated, and trust me, I don't see that as the case. I have, okay, maybe they are, because I have a non-binary child who's top of her class, and they are absolutely wonderful. I cannot express to you how important it is for me when she go, when they, sorry, it is tough, I got, when they go to school that they are welcome and they feel safe. They need to feel as safe as all of the other students, and that is not always the case. And I have to say that their teachers have been phenomenal. I don't have any complaints, and I don't want, you know, that actually is not even true, you know? Where other people see problems with race, critical race theory, which I think is a bunch of baloney, because CRT is not taught in our schools, tolerance, acceptance is. But when, when a child that I know of has been assaulted and/or called names, you know, what they're, what the teachers, from what I've seen, they try and bring them together and bring them to an understanding. Now, my instinct would be, okay, you're suspended, get out of here. That's not what's happening. I, so I don't understand, I'm trying to understand the other perspective. Anyways, I think you're doing a very fair job. I hope you stick to it, and I hope my children continue to feel safe and comfortable at school. And I am tremendously proud of my child, the one that was brought to tears earlier. This evening is one of mine, and that's why I'm here, because I love them more than, I'm sure, like, okay, somebody else said, "You're only as happy as your status child," and my child is incredibly sad this evening. And I'm furious, because I love them so much, so thank you.
My name is Nick Prill. I had some other things that I wanted to comment on, on the agenda, but unfortunately, even after pleading with you guys last month to express that if you did care about what we had to say, that you moved public comment, you still chose not to, so we do have our I'd like to thank Tim Shaw. As a parent of two children at Meadowbrook, Tim has been an incredible, incredible principal. Even at the beginning of this year, when there was, you know, a lot of uncertainty with the mask mandate, things of that nature, Tim was incredible to work with, with my wife and I, and my two children, and he's going to be sorely missed in this district. Those are some tough shoes to fill. With that said, the only reason we kept our kids in the school district was because of Principal Shaw. We trusted our kids in his care. It took me about five minutes of research to look into his replacement and find out that she was on the Curriculum Committee at Hudsonville Public Schools and was instrumental in implementing their implicit bias training. That's not somebody that my wife or I feel safe having our kids around, so please take notice today. With Tim Shaw's retirement, my wife and I will be unenrolling our children from Forest Hills and homeschooling them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent Monarch. I can be found at 620 Cascade Road. So I'm here today to give you an update on the book review process. Same as last month, it remains very obtuse. Amongst my persistent grievances are, number one, Policy 5407-F remains buried in the board book. It is not easily accessible to the average parent, and no link exists to it on the main page. Number two, there is no clear indication on if parents address books with school principals first, or that the only process is the book review process. Number three, I was told that a book review committee would be pulled for each case from a pool of community volunteers, and I have yet to see a call to create that pool. And number four, the policy form states, quote, "The decision of the board curriculum committee is final," unquote, but no pool of volunteers to sit on this committee exists. Given your inaction over the last three months, I have lost faith that any committee that you create will be fair and balanced without full transparency. I expect only a kangaroo court. I have tried contacting Scott Hade several times. At first, it seemed as though he wanted to meet with me, but in the last week, I've been ghosted. As such, I will continue next year with my book reports to this board. Amongst the over 400 choices I have to meet, there seem to be some very good candidates right here. Allegedly by Tiffany Jackson, available to children as young as age 15 with profanity, violence, and physical child abuse. Wade Watt, a comic book guide to relationships, bodies, and growing up by Heather Karina, available to children as young as 12 with graphic comics of masturbation and graphs of normalizing sex as early as age 10. Crank by Ellen Hopkins, available to children youngest age 12 with sexual assault and drug abuse. History is All You Left Me, Adam Silvera, available to 12-year-olds and up, graphic sex between minors and revenge sex. Heroin by Mandy McGuinness, available to children as young as 12 with profanity, child prostitution, and instructional descriptions on drug abuse. Impulse by Ellen Hopkins, available to children age 12 with self-mutilation, animal abuse, graphic descriptions of suicide attempts and sexual assault. Smoke by Ellen Hopkins, available to 15-year-olds and older with child abuse, domestic violence, and the graphic rape of a minor. And Push by Sapphire, available to children as young as 12 with racist slurs, graphic assault and battery of a child, child rape, incest, and child prostitution. There are books that need to be reclassified by age appropriateness and moved. You have the ability to engage with us and change this situation. We are waiting for more than just pithy responses. The next move is yours. I have copies of the information on the books that I have listed, if it would please the board to give.
You could pass those right down to Val, she'd love to have those. Thanks.
And I will leave copies in the back for anyone else who wants to have them. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Vincent.
[applause]
Thank you, Vincent. All right. Any other comments this evening? All right. If there are none, we only have one other thing that we are doing as a group. We are going to go into a closed session to do a few things for the superintendent's evaluation as we're wrapping up the year, so I could just move into it. I need a motion. Okay. May I have a motion to move into closed session?
I move into closed session.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right. Moving us back into open session, and I believe we only have one other thing to do, and that is have a motion. Do you think there's something else?
No.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourned.
And could we, second?
I second.
And Kristin Covell seconds that. We are adjourned.